It is Tuesday, March 14th, 9:35. I call to order the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. This morning, we'll have our invocation led by Dr. Geraldine Adams Daniels, pastor of Southside CME Church, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilor Daryl O'Quinn. If you're willing and able, please stand and join us. Thank you.
Let us pray. Oh Lord, we come this morning inviting your Spirit into this place. Give all an authority, Lord, the wisdom and the strength to know your will today. And not only to know your will, but to do your will. Help them remember that they are called to serve you and the people of this city as lovers of truth and justice. Almighty God, bless those who hold offices in this government, that they may do your work in a spirit of wisdom and kindness. And help us all as spiritual leaders, civic leaders, governmental leaders. Help us, Lord, to use the authority that has been given us and to serve faithfully and to promote the general welfare of all your children. This we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. ... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Dr. Daniels, for that very thoughtful prayer. At this time, Mr. Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember O'Quinn. Morning, Councilmember Tate. Morning, Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. President Protem Smithman.
Good morning.
Councilmember Allison.
Good morning, thank you very much. Councilors, the minutes are not ready for November 1st, 2022 through March 7th, 2023. Good morning, Chief. Are you bringing us communications from the mayor this morning? Thank you.
Morning, Madam President, Madam Protem, members of the council and to members of the public. Have a pretty meaty mayor's report. I'll try to be as succinct as possible this morning. The Birmingham Sidewalk Film Festival's own Daniel Shiner and Paul Rogers are Oscar winners, and the mayor wanted to celebrate them. Daniel, along with his directing partner, Daniel Kwan, won Academy Awards for Best Picture, Best Director, and Best Original Screenplay for their film Everything Everywhere All at Once. Paul Rogers won for Best Film Editing of the same film. Let's wish them a big congratulations, ma'am. Madam President, this is a big one that we're really excited about. It's a city that the city of Birmingham will host, will serve as host of the first and second rounds of March Madness this Thursday and Saturday. This is a major get for our city as Birmingham is positioning itself to be a major regional sports destination. Both Alabama and Auburn know we have some folk who...
All time.
We will pause and let, Councilmember Abbott, we will wait. We couldn't hear you because of your mask, ma'am. Both Alabama and Auburn will open up the NCAA Tournament at Legacy Arena. On Saturday, March 18th, we will host a screening of the games in front of City Hall from 12 o'clock to 6 o'clock PM. So we're asking all to come out. Everyone is welcome. Madam President, members of the council, members of the public. On last night, the city of Birmingham, along with Jimmy Hail Mission, opened its warming station in response to temperatures that were falling below freezing. We're going to host another warming station tonight from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Those needing shelter can come to the Jimmy Hail Mission located at 3420 Second Avenue North. Food will be provided. The Department of Youth Services, which is formerly our Division of Youth Services, and Fox 6 WBRC are once again hosting the annual Youth Summer Employment Program Kids and Jobs. Applications are now open through April the 14th, and they can be found on birminghamyouthfirst.org and wbrc.com. Just for information, Kids and Jobs was founded to introduce Birmingham youth ages 14 to 24 to the workforce and to cultivate the professional growth required for students to become active members of Birmingham's business community. Several thousand young people from the city of Birmingham have been able to retrieve summer jobs through this dynamic program. And for businesses that are looking to host young people in the Kids and Jobs program this summer, please visit bhameyouthfirst.org to complete a program partner application. Looking forward to employing several of our young people, several hundred of our young people this summer. All month long, we have been paying tribute to the amazing women of Birmingham during our Strong Her campaign. Want to continue to encourage everyone to be sure to check out these stories on social media every day in March. You will absolutely be inspired by our she-ros in our city. Special shout out to our senior project manager, Ms. Shonda Temple, and our deputy director of communications, Mr. Ed Bowser, for the great work that they have done on this fantastic effort. Couple more notes, Madam President. The HBCU Spring Coming Festival is this week. People from all across the country will come to our city for this annual week-long fest that celebrates the HBCU experience through various events, scholarships, panels, and service activities. For more information and to register, visit hbcuspringcoming.com. For Birmingham residents who still need assistance with their rent and utilities, please don't hesitate to reach out to our Department of Community Development for rental assistance. Help is still available for qualified applicants. You can go to birminghamal.gov/renthelp or call 205-254-2309. Told you it was a meaty one today, Madam President. The city of Birmingham will continue to keep residents informed about bulk trash pickup with daily updates online at birminghamal.gov/bulktrash. So we ask citizens, please continue to make sure you're paying attention to that when there are adjustments. We try to keep you informed daily. Also, as a reminder for those residents that are already using their new carts, please remember to place your new carts for our uniform trash in front of your homes. Any household garbage that's placed on the ground, in alleys, or on the ground in front of your residence cannot be picked up. You can also receive more updates by going to birminghamal.gov/pickup or by texting BHAMREADY to 888-777. Finally, Madam President, our last update. Every March, we celebrate AmeriCorps Week, and we pay tribute to our dynamic professionals who help serve across the city's enterprise in the role of vistas. And we have some dynamic ones. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Alicia Lumpkin, who serves as Director of Our Process Improvement and our AmeriCorps Vista Chief Service Officer, also Ms. Brittany Jackson, I don't know if Brittany is joining us today, and also members of our Vista team, to please join me as well as I read part of our proclamation in their honor. So if all of our dynamic vistas that are serving in various city departments and divisions, would please join us. As you can see, Madam President, members of the council and members of the public, these dynamic team members are a part of our city's enterprise, and they serve in a service capacity, but they are valued members of our various departments and divisions. And they serve a critical role across our city, and we want to thank them for their service. The proclamation reads, "Whereas in Alabama, more than 7,000 AmeriCorps members and AmeriCorps senior volunteers of diverse ages and backgrounds help meet local needs at more than 600 locations in the state of Alabama by responding to COVID-19, tutoring or mentoring children and youth, supporting veterans and military families, combating the opioid epidemic, restoring the environment, and responding to disasters. And whereas AmeriCorps members and AmeriCorps senior volunteers encourage collaboration and partnerships, leveraging millions of volunteers in service and acquiring the support of business foundation and other local partners to increase the effectiveness of their initiatives. And whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and to increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas AmeriCorps Week is an opportunity to recognize the dedication and commitment of more than 1.2 million Americans who have chosen to serve their country through AmeriCorps and millions more who have served in AmeriCorps seniors and their community partners and to encourage more Americans to follow in their footsteps." Now therefore, I, on behalf of our mayor, Randall Whitford, Mayor of the City of Birmingham, do hereby issue this proclamation in proclaiming March the 12th through March the 18th, 2023 as AmeriCorps Week in Birmingham, Alabama, and urge residents to thank AmeriCorps members and alumni and AmeriCorps senior volunteers for their service and to find their own ways to give back to their communities. And on behalf of our mayor, executive leadership team, we want to thank these dynamic servants for all that you do across our city's enterprise. Going to ask Ms. Alicia Lumpkin to come up and give a few remarks.
Thank you, Chief Sparks. First, I would like yours, and we make good use of that talent. We have some strong talent retention numbers. But today, in addition to what we have, our members that serve here in the city of Birmingham, we have a treat. We have other servicemembers from projects across the city that have joined us this morning. And so I want to make sure that we recognize those AmeriCorps projects as well. First, we have our group from UAB, our Vista statewide program, and their food security initiative, Ms. Deidre Sanderson. Also, we have Positive Maturity and our RSB Director, Ms. Heather, Ms. Heather Lanley. There she is. We also have, again, another Positive Maturity team member, Ms. Brenda Woodley. We also have Ms., we have Benz Connects with the CDC, and their program members are here as well. If you all would raise your hand. And then, of course, we have our AmeriCorps Vista members here that serve the city of Birmingham. If you all would just raise your hands so you can be recognized. It's truly an honor that these folks give of their time, talents, and service to give back to the community in various facets. So again, we're just thankful for that recognition, and we're just grateful for their service.
Thank you.
So we'll present them this proclamation, Madam President. Members of the council, that concludes the mayor's report.
Thank you so much for bringing this information to us, Mrs. Abbott.
Yesterday, in the Glen Iris neighborhood, there was a police chase involving five or six police cars. And we knew they weren't ours because we don't chase people. But it was the city of Estavia, and they were hauling through our neighborhood, chasing a little black car. And I was wondering, I mean, I know we have a no-chase policy in Birmingham. Do we allow other cities to come in and chase people through our narrow congested city streets?
Challenge is, I can't say allow. Can't say allow, but we do follow up as a city with those municipalities when that happens. And of course, that will be happening in this instance as well.
Okay. They did wreck one of their cars. They had to be hauled away, so I don't know whether they caught the guy or not, but it was exciting. But you know, we complain all the time about our congestion and our lack of parking and all those issues, and here are these little narrow streets that we can't even drive through, and they're going wild, so...
As an administration, Councilmember Abbott, we do follow up with municipalities when that happens, so no different on this one. We want to make sure that our citizens and those who travel through are safe, and we do work to enforce that policy.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. At this time, councilors, without objection, I'd like the rules to suspend the rules to allow for our presentations this morning. And we'll start with our first presentation. Oh, I thought he was talking down there. Good morning, Counselor Clinton Woods has a presentation, two presentations, actually. So, Mr. Woods.
Hey, good morning. Real briefly, I know we've been able to have a lot of momentum going in our community development space. I think that team's doing a really great job. And so, got a call from NACA, Paul, appreciate you reaching out, setting that up. But NACA CEO Bruce Marks is here, and they have some really exciting programs that could be impactful in the city, for the city, but also for the residents in the city. And so I wanted to bring him up just a few minutes to kind of talk about those programs and what those opportunities are, and just kind of give everybody some important information. So I'm going to ask him to come on up at this time and take the mic.
Sounds great. Thank you very much, Counselor.
Good morning, sir. We'll give you three minutes. Thank you very much for bringing this to us.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. And I'm here with Johnny Clark, who runs our, you know, office here in Birmingham and, you know, throughout the state of Alabama. Is it possible to give out some of the material as I go through it?
Sure, we have it.
Oh, okay, great. So, real quick, let me just go through the various programs. So, we are a nonprofit housing organization, NACA is. We're the largest housing counseling organization in the country, so we do 30% of the counseling in the country. So we're thrilled to be doing this in Birmingham and really throughout Alabama because this is going to be one of our, you know, biggest areas. And we factually provide the best mortgage in America, so we're the only organization that can say that. So everybody that comes through NACA gets a no-down payment mortgage, no closing costs, no fees, and it's always at a below-market fixed rate. So today's rate is 5.75 for a 30-year fixed, 5.25 for a 20-year fixed. And we never consider anyone's credit score. We just look at the payment history focusing on the last 12 months based on what the homeowner really controls. So factually, it's the best mortgage in the country, but what you have in your material are the different programs that we have. So yes, we have, you know, the NACA mortgage. Yes, we have, you know, the comprehensive counseling. And if you go through that, what you also see is that if someone has a Section 8, if they have a housing choice voucher, they can use that housing choice voucher for their mortgage payment. And with the 20-year mortgage for 15 years or virtually the whole term, that the re-Section 8 or the housing choice voucher pays that as well. So we're really excited about that program. That is a huge program to really transition, you know, people out of the public housing into affordable home ownership. As you go through it, we also have what we call the $1 program. So what we ask for the cities and towns in the city of Birmingham is to sell your properties that you own for $1, whether it's, you know, an existing property that needs to be renovated because we can provide the financing for someone to do the renovation, or a vacant lot for someone to build a new construction. And we are looking at the prefabs out there where people can have a beautiful prefab home, you know, that's even nicer than a stick build for, you know, when you look at a size of 1,200 to 1,300 square foot and sell it for about $100 to $110,000. That means that the mortgage payment with the NACA mortgage is between $600 and $700 a month all in without any government subsidies. So we got the purchase rehab, and, you know, it sounds too good to be true. We understand that. And that's the question that everybody should ask, but we have a track record of unprecedented success. We've done over 75,000 mortgages. We have a foreclosure rate of 0.00012. And virtually, everybody is a low to moderate income. 90% of our homeowners are people of color, but we're open to everybody, so we're excited. And if you have any questions, we would love to answer that, and we certainly appreciate the opportunity to be able to, you know, present to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor Clark does have a question.
Not a question, but a comment. I just want to thank Bruce for continuing to hang out in Birmingham to raise awareness about NACA. I had my first, my first home purchase was through NACA, and I really appreciated the process and the handholding and the education and even the training around advocacy for the affordable housing issue and helping people to demystify the process and understand that they can access home ownership. So, thank you all for being an activist in addition to a mortgage lender. And I know that this council supports the NCRC, which is an advocacy organization, you know, around fairness in lending, CRA with banks, but you all have your own style and history of activism and getting banks to be accountable and just going head-to-head with them. So I appreciate you and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just to add one last thing, if I could. We, you know, during the mortgage crisis, we were in the forefront of, you know, taking on that fight. We helped over half a million homeowners save their home. And with this Best in America mortgage, we have $20 billion of this one mortgage product, $15 billion from Bank of America, so we can meet whatever demand is out there. But we certainly appreciate the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Williams, your next presentation.
Thank you, Bruce, for taking some time to stop by today. Like I said, housing is probably one of the biggest costs out there right now. It's about 70% of current inflation is driven by increasing housing costs, and so it's more important than ever. But next, we get a very special presentation that I want to ask my girls to come on up. Huffman Vikings, they had a great season this year, very excited. So, throw them some love as they come. And so these ladies have had an incredible season. You know, it's been very special to watch, been able to see them over the years, grow and get better. You see them come in as freshmen, you see them, you know, great coaching staff, really, really, really pushes them. They really are pushed and worked, and they see them grow and get better and better every year. So it's been just a joy and excitement for me just to be able to sit there and watch the process. This year, they made a Final Four run, ended as the second-best team in the state, brought home the red map to the trophy case. And so, the first Huffman girls team to make it to the championship, the first girls team to put a trophy, a state trophy into that trophy case. And so we are incredibly proud, incredibly excited about what they've done. And so I just want to get up the way here and allow you to hear from some of the administrators. So Principal Lyons, and then Coach Slater, and then we'll have all the champions introduce themselves and go from there.
Thank you.
Come on up, Principal Lyons.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We are very humbled to be here this morning. You know, I just feel like a proud Papa every time I'm with my students. They really, really worked hard this year, not only to represent Birmingham City Schools, but to represent the city of Birmingham. We wanted to bring a trophy back to Birmingham, and we did, as you can see, bring a trophy back to Birmingham. These girls set out on a mission. After starting one and two on the season, they reared off 20 in a row, finished the season, what was it, 29 and 5? 29 and 5. That is a tremendous accomplishment, and they put the first piece of hardware as far as female program in the trophy case at Huffman High School during Women's History Month. So, I mean, tremendous accomplishment. They set out and they achieved, I'd say, 99% of their goal because we wanted a blue map, but we'll take this red. We'll take the red map because there's a lot of other teams that would have wanted to be here today. So I'm so proud of them. They have worked hard and still maintain their integrity academically as well. So most of my young ladies back here boast a 3.0 GPA or higher. So these young ladies are getting it done on the court and in the classroom. You can't ask for more than that as a principal. So I'm very proud of them. I'm going to give Coach Slater an opportunity to tell you about our journey, and then the girls will introduce themselves.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lyons.
Good morning. My name is Lynn Slater. I'm the head girls basketball coach at Huffman High School. I feel honored to be here this morning to have my team be recognized as Class 6A girls, state runner-ups. I have an outstanding group of young ladies and young women standing behind me who worked hard all season long for us to be able to achieve our goals. As Dr. Lyons stated, we did start the season off kind of rough, and it was looking really bad at one time, but we stayed with and we stayed the course. We kept the faith, and we did win 20 games in a row, which was a record for consecutive wins at our school. We also won the Birmingham City Tournament Championship this year, and that was our first time doing that. We won the Class 6A Area 11 Championship. Along the way on the playoffs, we won our sub-regional game. We went to Jacksonville, and we won both of our games there, and we are the Northeast Regional Champions. And we made it to the Final Four for our second time in school history for girls basketball. We won our first semifinal state game over here at Chris Tuscaloosa, in which we were down by 11 points, and actually, we were behind the entire game. But once again, we kept the faith, and we played hard, and we was able to pull out the win. In the state championship game, we went up against, at that time, the five-time defending state champions in Hazel Green, and we weren't able to pull it off. But as Dr. Lyons stated, we did bring home some hardware as the 6A state runner-ups, and we made school history by being the first girls team to play in a state championship game. So I'm just grateful. We plan to continue to work hard, and hopefully, we'll be back next year holding the blue trophy. Thank you.
So we're going to give the coaches an opportunity to introduce themselves, then the young ladies can introduce themselves.
Uh-uh. Hey, how y'all doing? Good morning. I'm Asia Morris, but everybody call me Coach A. I'm the assistant coach.
Thank you.
And I'm a former Viking.
Alright.
I played for Coach Slater as well in 2013 through 2015. I was the point guard. Yeah.
Good morning. Oh, my name is Jasmine Fowler. I am the assistant coach. I'm also a former Viking as well. I played with her from 2013 to 2016, which was the year that we made it to the Final Four for the first time. Yeah.
Hi, I'm Coach Patty Reiser. I am a Viking. I also play at Huffman, not under Coach Slater, I'm older than her. But I've been a Viking, I graduated from Huffman, and I also teach, well, I taught there. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Tanai Lockhart. I'm a senior, and I play post-guard.
Good morning. My name is Chana Ashford, and I'm a power forward, and I'm a senior.
My name is Destiny Nelson. I'm a senior, and I play the two.
Good morning. My name is Lella Collins. I'm a junior, and I play power forward.
My name is Tiana Ward, and I'm the basketball manager.
Okay.
Good morning. My name is Kyle Brown, and I'm the head manager.
Good morning. My name is Yana Brown, and I'm a junior, and I'm a shooting guard.
My name is Brianna Robbins. I'm a freshman, and I play shooting guard.
Good morning. My name is Caitlin Mathis, and I am a sophomore. And I play, and I'm a shooting guard.
Good morning. My name is Mariela Coleman. I'm a senior, and I play the center.
Hey, my name is Alicia Kennedy. I'm a senior, and I play the center.
Good morning. My name is Jameria Jones. I'm a junior, and I play post-guard.
the blue trophy. Thank you.
So we're going to give the coaches an opportunity to introduce themselves, then the young ladies can introduce themselves.
Uh-uh. Uh, hey, how y'all doing? Good morning. Um, I'm Asia Morris, but everybody call me Coach A. I'm the assistant coach.
Thank you.
And I'm a forward more Viking.
All right.
I played for Coach Slater as well in, um, 2013 through 2015. Um, I was the point guard. Uh, yeah.
Good morning. Oh, my name is Jasmine Fowler. I am the assistant coach. Um, I'm also a former Viking as well. I played with her from 2013 to 2016, which was the year that we made it to the Final Four for the first time. Um, yeah.
Hi, I'm, I'm Coach Patty Reeser. Um, I am a Viking. I also play at Huffman, not under Coach Slater, I'm older than her. Um, but, um, I've been a, uh, I've graduated from Huffman and I also teach, well, I taught there.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Tanaya Lockhart. I'm a senior and I play post-guard.
Good morning. My name is Chana Ashford and I'm a power forward and I'm a senior.
My name is Destiny Nelson. I'm a senior and I play the two.
My name is Leila Collins. I'm a junior and I play power forward.
My name is Tiana Ward and I'm the basketball manager.
Okay.
Good morning. My name is Kyle Brown and I'm the head manager.
Uh, good morning. My name is, uh, Yana Brown and I'm a, a junior and I'm a shooting guard.
Uh, my name is Brianna Robbins. Um, I'm a freshman and I play shooting guard.
Good morning. My name is Caitlin Mathis and I am a sophomore. And I play shoot, and I'm a shooting guard.
Good morning. My name is Mariela Coleman. I'm a senior and I play the center.
Hey, my name is Alicia Kennedy. I'm a senior and I play the center.
Good morning. My name is Jamiria Jones. I'm a junior and I play post-guard.
Good morning. My name is Tameria Jones. I'm a junior and I play post-guard.
Good morning. My name is Jada Kessler. I am a junior and I play power forward.
All right. So we got a great group. We're really excited. I want to read this resolution into the record quickly. Um, whereas individual and team championships are highly sought after in high school sports, this legislative body commends rare athletic achievement and pays special recognition to those who pursue such excellence and become examples and an inspiration for the youth of this great city. And whereas athletic competition helps to enhance both moral and physical development of young athletes, preparing them for the future by instilling in them the importance of teamwork, encouraging a standard of healthy living and developing a sense of fair play and competition, the Council of the City of Birmingham is justly proud to congratulate the Huffman High School Girls Basketball Team upon the occasion of a historic journey as 6A Northeast Regional Champions and the Lady Vikings' first appearance in the 6A State Championship. On Saturday, March 1st, 2023, at the Legacy Arena, Birmingham Jefferson Convention Complex in Birmingham, Alabama, to praise, to the praise and applause of their excited fans, the Huffman High Lady Vikings earned the ticket to the 6A State Championship. The Vikings outscored the Hillcrest Patriots 22 to 7 in the fourth quarter, holding the Patriots only one point in the last five minutes. And whereas in a sport such as basketball, which demands athletic prowess, speed and agility, Athletic Director Carlos Hammond, Head Coach Lindsey Slater, and Assistant Coaches Patty Reeser, Jasmine Fowler, and Asia Morris have worked hard to hone the skills of this team, teaching these outstanding athletes lessons which will prove invaluable both on and off the court. And whereas athletically and academically, team members Brianna Runnens, Tameria Jones, Elena Brown, Destiny Nelson, Caitlin Mathis, Jamiria Jones, Tanaya Lockhart, Chani Ashford, Jada Kessler, Leila Collins, Alicia Kennedy, and Mariela Coleman have proven themselves to be a combination of talent reflecting favorably on their school and community. Special thanks to Principal John Lyons and the faculty and staff of Huffman High School for their unwavering support through the 2022, 2023 basketball season. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Birmingham, with Mayor Randall L. Woodfin concurring, pauses in its deliberations to congratulate members of the Huffman High School Basketball Team on the occasion of capturing the 2023 basketball state, 6A state runner-up and for their outstanding season and overall team record presented the 14th Day of March, 2023, at the recommendation of Counselor Clinton P. Woods.
So we'll offer that for unanimous consent?
All in favor, let it be known, I say aye.
Resolution, please.
All in favor, let it be known, I say aye.
Aye.
All right. Well, thank y'all so much. Uh, we're going to let one of our seniors, Tanaya, close us out with a quick, a quick statement. Come on.
Hey, well, on this journey that we had since my freshman year, it was rough coming in, not having a great season, but over the past years and Coach Slater coaching us, it been great. And this year we was able to make history. It was truly a blessing to make history this year.
Thank you. It's certainly not lost on us that this is Women's History Month and you all have definitely made history. I think what you've shown each of us today is not how you start the game, it's what, how you end it. And so I'm just very, very excited for you. Most of our counselors wanted to say something, so I'll start with you, Counselor Tate.
Uh, good morning, Dr. Lyons and the coaching staff. I'm glad to see that you're doing well, um, from your, your, your medical scare. Um, just want to echo what, uh, Madam President said, it is a great honor to see young ladies soaring and, and, and just bringing out the best. I bid you farewell, wished you the best. Hopefully all scholarships knock on your door and come in your door and keep, continue to represent the city of Birmingham very well and the state of Alabama because it is some truly amazing people doing some amazing things. So I, I just pour into you that you will soar and continue to soar, but congratulations again to my colleagues, bragging rights.
Thank you. Counselor Protem, uh, Counselor Williams Thompson.
Whoever wants to go first. I think we're all very excited for all, all of you ladies, both coaching staff and, and as well as obviously our student athletes. Um, and it's always nice to see the East Side, uh, win a trophy. So congratulations.
It's okay. We'll, we'll let y'all have one. But you know, I went to WJ Christian, so we'll say I had the East Side for a few years. Uh, who all, is there anybody going to college on a basketball scholarship? I, I was just wondering. No, because y'all didn't say. I was just, you know, we're always interested to see where you all are going after college. But I really want to say I'm really proud of y'all for securing a college scholarship because that's not an easy task, even though golf is way different from basketball. Um, it, it, you know, that's a whole different level of commitment and really just dedication to put yourself out there and put the work to play on a college level because everybody can't do that, especially basketball. But I really want to commend first the assistant coaches for coming back because a lot of times people, when they graduate, they will leave their high school and they'll come, you know, you know how it is, they, they can't let go of high school. So they'll be around for the games for a little bit, but for you to come back and mentor these young girls really says a lot about that. And for you, and especially you two, you guys are still really young, you guys can relate to them, talk to them, and I know you guys have a positive influence on them. As far as the girls, I'm really proud of y'all. I did watch the game, I think both games, and that really says a lot, Coach, about your girls because a lot of times even adults, when they see they're behind, you have to find something deep within you to keep going, right? Because it's easier to give up. It's easy to give up and be like, oh, we did our best, you know, no one else has gone this far, we'll get through it. But I really saw y'all fought till the end. I really admire that honestly, especially being a former athlete, that is a hard thing to deal with mentally, you know, not laying down and quitting, right? Because you really, I'm sure you were back there in the locker room, your coach can yell you, scream you all day, but you all had to come together as a team and say, okay, we want this, this is something that we want. So I'm really proud of y'all. I think of Huffman, but you know, especially coming from Birmingham City Schools, I really think Counselor Woods can probably say they count us out a lot of times, but you know, I think Birmingham City Schools, the example of us using very little to achieve a lot. So I'm really proud of y'all. Congratulations, Counselor Woods. And, um, we're really happy to see y'all and best wishes on all your future endeavors. And we hope to see y'all here next year with the, the blue map.
We're, we're declaring that right now. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Dr. Quinn.
Yeah, I just wanted to just commend you guys on your, your academics. Um, super important, obviously, um, you know, I think most folks who are involved in athletics, uh, you know, don't do that for the, their profession in life. That's not how they, you know, pay their mortgage. But it's, it's, it's super important that you guys be recognized also for your academics. Um, and when paired with your, you know, experience, uh, in athletics, um, it makes for a, a, a great combination. Um, you know, I, I feel like, uh, learning to deal with adversity and, and loss is just as important as, you know, um, as winning too. Um, more often than not in life, you know, you're going to try things and, and not be successful, but the, the, the important thing is that you try and, um, you know, learn how to work with others and, and that team building skills. Um, so, so good work, you know, and, and keep it up. We'll see you back here again, I'm soon, I'm sure, soon.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that y'all just make me proud to be a woman. I think that you have, you have shown what kind of people you are and you have a great future in front of you. And you know, y'all are all so young, I can't tell the coaches from the, from the players, you know, I was sitting there thinking, wow. Um, and you have good colors too. So, uh, but I just want to say that y'all have done great and, and the academic part and the athletic part are both important, but your academic part is going to take you on to where you're at my age. And so you have to, you, you have to keep on striving and I, I just am so proud of you because you have done so well. And, um, I know Counselor Woods is just beaming. So, um, thank you all for being here and thank you for working so hard to make Birmingham proud of you.
Thank you. Counselor Clark, do you have any comments?
Since I'm invited. I feel like my colleagues said it all and Dr. Lyons, you know, I'm a big fan of you and your leadership, uh, coaching staff, team members. I'm really proud. I think my colleagues, I agree with everything they said, so, um, I'm just really proud. You all.
Thank you again. And ladies, we would love to take a picture with you, uh, the female members of the council, but it would take away the majority, so we'll let you go on and take your picture. Thank you very much. Thank you all. I just had to put that in there, sorry. But thank you all so much. I tell you what, Kim, could we get them to turn around and face the audience and then if you all will stand behind them and take that picture? Thank you. All of us, yeah, we'll let y'all come in. Or if they could come around, thank you. Yes. The twins. Smiling, thank you, Coach. I was going to say, Coach A, you know how we do it, you got to get in the middle, in the front.
See, you could have been a basketball player.
I didn't realize I could. Thank you, Coach. Thank you all.
Congratulations.
We thank you again. We're very excited for each of you. We'll continue now with our presentations. Counselor Smitherman has two presentations as well.
I always thought you had to be tall to be a basketball player, you know, a good one.
Thank you, Madam President. So if I could have black and white photography come up, please? Thank you. And so black and white photography, I think, are they in your district now, Counselor? Well, they used to be in my district, but, um, this is, everybody knows about black and white photography, whether you've seen, um, them capturing a wedding, which I was in the wedding and they were there, I was, I was like, hey, guys. Or you've seen them just around at different events. And so I really just want to commemorate them for their 25th anniversary. I think anytime we have a, um, a small black owned business that has been around for that long, I think it takes, you know, really a lot of tenacity and determination to stay around and really always giving back. I want to say thank you, but just really briefly, uh, jujuju. The Council of the City of Birmingham is justly proud to congratulate Mr. Ricky White, he's not here though, but this is his wife and his daughter, on celebrating the 25th anniversary of black and white photography. And whereas pursuing his vision to capture special moments through photography, Mr. White opened up his first photography studio 25 years ago in March of 1998. Due to growth and desire to expand, in 2002, black and white photography moved to its current location at 401 First Avenue North, Birmingham, Alabama. He has done individual pictures, family and pet pictures, school and senior year portraits, model portfolios, photography, videography, services for special events. His artistic expressions through photography are also displayed at the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute. And whereas by his side throughout, sorry, throughout his life, his wife, Jacqueline McCall White and their children, Renar Ricky Two, Ricky the Second, Tamara, along with his eight grandchildren, all who share and rejoice in his achievements, is a sense of this legislative body that when individuals of such noble aims and accomplishments are brought to our attention, they should be celebrated and recognized by all the citizens of the great city of Birmingham. Now therefore be it resolved that this Council of the City of Birmingham, with Mayor Randall L. Woodfin concurring, pauses in its deliberations to commend the Mr. Ricky White Senior on celebrating 25 years of providing outstanding professional photography in the city of Birmingham and surrounding communities. Presented this 14th Day of March, 2023, at the recommendation of Council President Protem Crystal Ann Smitherman.
Thank you.
I move for UC.
Second.
I, I move the resolution.
All in favor, let it be known, I say aye.
Aye. Thank you. And now I'd like his family to come up and say just a few words.
Well, good morning. Good morning. Um, it is an honor to stand here for my father, Ricky White. Unfortunately, he had a school this morning, so, but he really would love to have been here. We want to just say thank you so much to the City Council, to the city of Birmingham, and to all of our clients, both past, present, and future. Um, we just, I know one thing that my father would say is just thank you, Lord, because so many things have happened, you know, with the pandemic, but one thing that my father never did was give up. And I am just very proud of him. And we just want to say thank you for recognizing black and white photography and we look forward to many more years to come. Thank you.
Counselor Hard.
I just want to say happy silver anniversary and also thank you for, um, you know, removing Blythe in District Eight with the new venture with the former library. And it's already looking much better than where we had it, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then my last presentation is for the YWCA, if they will come up. And so the YWCA, the Young Women's Christian Association of Central Alabama, they are celebrating their 120th anniversary, which I think is amazing, uh, and thank you for all that you do. They do everything from affordable housing, pay equity, violence prevention, which I think is so important that you guys support women in domestic violence situations, healthcare, women's empowerment, and civil rights. Uh, they have served as a part of a movement working to advance the quality of life for women and their families. And whereas the WYCA of Central Alabama promotes empowerment and economic advancement by expanding opportunities for women's successful workplace participation and quality education for all by increasing access to quality equitable and inclusive education opportunities for all. Women come to the YWC, YWCA in times of crisis for safe and affordable housing, help with basic needs such as food and clothing, victim advocacy, help with addiction, job training and career counseling, and case management. And whereas throughout its storied history, the success of this organization is in direct correlation to the efforts of its leaders, past and present, as well as the staff members. Now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Birmingham, with Mayor Randall L. Woodfin concurring, pauses in its deliberations to commend the YWCA of Central Alabama on celebrating 120 years of serving as a beacon of hope in the Birmingham and surrounding communities. And we have presented this 21st Day of March as a future date because their anniversary is actually next week? Yes. Um, and this at the recommendation of myself, Council President Protem Crystal Ann Smitherman. Uh, I move for UC.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known, I say aye.
Aye. Move the resolution.
All in favor, let it be known, I say aye.
Aye. Thank you. And then if you guys want to introduce yourselves and give a couple of words.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you, Madam President, and thank you so much, Counselor Smitherman. 120 years is a, a huge milestone and we are extremely proud of the work that we have done at the YWCA. We have been at the forefront as a pioneering organization of social justice movements. We were one of the first in the city to integrate services as well as the first, I believe, to offer GED classes in the city. We provide today, uh, programs, as Counselor Smitherman mentioned, that really increase access for people. And people, meaning women in particular, and people of color. We stand on the shoulders of giants, warriors like Dr. Dorothy Height and our very own Odessa
Blythe in District Eight with the new venture with the former library. And it's already looking much better than where we had it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then my last presentation is for the YWCA, if they will come up. And so, the YWCA, the Young Women's Christian Association of Central Alabama, they are celebrating their 120th anniversary, which I think is amazing. And thank you for all that you do. They do everything from affordable housing, pay equity, violence prevention, which I think is so important that you guys support women in domestic violence situations, healthcare, women's empowerment, and civil rights. They have served as a part of a movement working to advance the quality of life for women and their families. And whereas the WYCA of Central Alabama promotes empowerment and economic advancement by expanding opportunities for women's successful workplace participation, and quality education for all by increasing access to quality, equitable, and inclusive education experiences for all. Women come to the YWCA in times of crisis for safe and affordable housing, help with basic needs such as food and clothing, victim advocacy, help with addiction, job training and career counseling, and case management. And whereas throughout its storied history, the success of this organization is in direct correlation to the efforts of its leaders, past and present, as well as the staff members. Now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Birmingham, with Mayor Randall L. Woodfin concurring, pauses in its deliberations to commend the YWCA of Central Alabama on celebrating 120 years of serving as a beacon of hope in the Birmingham and surrounding communities. And we have presented this 21st Day of March as a future date because their anniversary is actually next week. Yes. And this at the recommendation of myself, Council President Pro Tem Crystal Ann Smitherman. I move for you, C.
All in favor, let it be known, must sing aye.
Aye. Move the resolution.
All in favor, let it be known, must sing aye.
Aye. Thank you. And then if you guys want to introduce yourselves and give a couple of words.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you, Madam President, and thank you so much, Counselor Smitherman. 120 years is a huge milestone, and we are extremely proud of the work that we have done at the YWCA. We have been at the forefront as a pioneering organization of social justice movements. We were one of the first in the city to integrate services, as well as the first, I believe, to offer GED classes in the city. We provide today programs, as Counselor Smitherman mentioned, that really increase access for people. And people, meaning women in particular, and people of color. We stand on the shoulders of giants, warriors, like Dr. Dorothy Height and our very own Odessa Warfolk. These are the women who helped pave the way for women like me, still a young girl from the South Side of Chicago. I am honored to lead this organization into its next chapter, along with my colleagues, to show the world that women and people of color are equal, powerful, and unstoppable. And again, we are inviting the community to come out to celebrate our birthday, which is next week officially, but on Tuesday between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. in our gym. Just come by, have a cupcake, or say hello, and learn more about our programs. So, thank you again so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. That concludes our presentations at this time. We'll go back to our agenda. Mr. Clerk, if you would provide us with the items that are considered for consent.
Note that items six and seven were recommended by the Transportation Committee. Page seven, we have items eight, nine, 10, and 11 on consent. Items eight, nine, and 10 were recommended by the Transportation Committee. Page eight, we have items 12, 13, 14, and 15 on consent. Page nine, we have items 16, 17, 18, and 19 on consent. Page 10, we have items 20, 21, 22, and 23 on consent. Page 11, we have items 24, 25, 26, and 27 on consent. Page 12, we have items 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, and 33 on consent. And we conclude with item 34 on page 13, consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Counselors, are there any items you'd like to add or remove from consent? All right, thank you. This time, let me read my notice. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial, and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the Agenda Order of Business. All matters of permanent operation will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Counselors, if I could entertain a motion and second for approval of the consent agenda.
I move approval.
Second. Yes, I'm counting seven.
Two fours. Yeah, she's out.
Woods is sitting.
I have Woods. I miss him. Hold on a second. Oh, yeah. I have, I have Counselate. Let's just do this again. How about that? One second. I have got Counselor, who did the motion, sorry?
It was Abbott and then-
I thought I heard Counselor.
Tate was the second, right?
Clark's second.
What's that we do?
Counsel Clark.
Abbott and Clark. Thank you.
Let's do it. Let's try it again.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. The consent agenda passes. You had any, are we good?
I got it.
You had any items that were listed as consent, they have been approved. We hope you have a great day. We'll continue with the rest of our agenda. I do want to acknowledge our retiring Director of Vulcan, Ms. Darlene Negrata. Thank you very much for your service. We appreciate you. All right, Mr. Clerk, if you'll read that first out.
All right. Item one, the resolution- Item two, a resolution assentee to the vacation of the folly, 1,1100 square feet of airspace that is located parallel to and between 20th Street South and 22nd Street South, perpendicular to and between 9th Avenue South and 8th Court North-South, located on Rich Arden Jr. Boulevard South, on behalf of Southern Research Institute owners and hearing of ownership parties, case number S U B 2022-84.
All right. Thank you, Counselors. Could I have a second and a motion so we can hear this item? All right, thank you. We have a resolution before us assending the vacation of the properties that's listed. And we'll let you start, Chief, if you'll just announce.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Tim Gambrell, I serve as Chief Planner for the City of Birmingham, and this is subdivision case 2022-84. And it is a resolution to determine whether the city council will give its assent to the vacation of the following, 1,100 square feet of airspace that is located parallel to and between 20th Street South and 22nd Street South, and perpendicular to and between 9th Avenue South and 8th Court South, so that the owner can consolidate property, and whether such vacation will deprive other property owners of such rights as they may have to egress and ingress from their property. The one-third right-of-way vacation fee has been set at $10,798.33. And on January 11, 2023, the subdivision committee of the Birmingham Planning Commission recommended the approval of this vacation to the full council, and it was forwarded to the full council without a recommendation from the Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. And that concludes the report.
Thank you. I'm going to turn this over to Counselor Pro Tem Smitherman as Chair of Public Improvement, since this is a public hearing. Counselor Smitherman?
Thank you, Madam President. And I want the council to know there's no recommendation because we, we had, I had to cancel the meeting at the last minute, so that was the reason why there isn't one. But, okay, there is, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this item in the audience? Is the applicant here? Is he, anybody here? Yeah, okay. Can you come up and state your name and your address, and anything else you'd like us to know about this item?
Yes, ma'am. I'm Mark Clark with Shoal Engineering here in Birmingham. The airspace vacation is going through to, as part of our resurvey to consolidate the SRI property, the airspace is around the crosswalk that is existing. It's been there for probably 20 years or so that we're just trying to clean up.
Counselors, do you have any questions? Okay. Thank you. Well, I'll send it back to you, Madam President, to call for the vote.
Thank you. All right, Counselors, we're ready for the vote.
All right, the vote should be up.
All right, thank you. That item passes. Next item.
Item three, a resolution assentee to the vacation of the falling 2,731 square feet of the right-of-way that is located parallel to and between 19th Place Southwest and 21st Street Southwest, and perpendicular to and between Pottery Avenue and Jackson Avenue, located at 1680 19th Place Southwest, on behalf of West End Hills Missionary Baptist Church owners and a hearing of ownership parties, case number S U B 2022-85. And just for the record, note that both items say no recommendation because of the committee not being, so, and a motion, I need a motion.
Second.
All right, for you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gambrell. And Ms. Pro Tem will be in charge of this.
Yes, ma'am. Tim Gambrell, I serve as Chief Planner for the City of Birmingham. This is case subdivision 2022-85, and it is a resolution to determine whether the city council will give its assent to the vacation of 2,731 square feet of right-of-way that's located parallel to and between 19th Place Southwest and 21st Street Southwest, and perpendicular to and between Pottery Avenue and Jackson Avenue, so that the owner can consolidate property, and whether such vacation will deprive other property owners of rights as they may have to egress and ingress from their property. The one-third right-of-way vacation fee has been set at $983.16. On December 11, 2022, the subdivision committee of the Birmingham Planning Commission recommended the approval of this vacation to the full council. And as mentioned, there is no recommendation from Public Improvements and Beautification Committee. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to speak to this item?
Yes, ma'am. Mark Clark, Shoal Engineering, again. This is a resurvey for the West End Hills Missionary Baptist Church. They have property on both sides of the alley. It's actually a parking lot now. The alley's really been vacated for years as far as, you know, in kind of public use, and we're resurveying it for their financing. And this, again, is a cleanup effort to make sure that everything's vacated and officially and properly done.
Okay, thank you. Counselors, do you have any questions?
Yes, I would like to just reiterate that West Hills, West End Hills Missionary Baptist Church's property is in District Seven. And I know that the church has worked diligently to try to be good neighbors, and they're working very well to want to revitalize that area. So I commend them for doing this. Thank you.
Thank you for that information. Okay, well, Madam President, I'll send it to you to call for the vote.
All right, thank you. We're ready for the vote for all the questions and comments. All right, thank you, Counselors. Item number three passes. Mr. Clerk, do we have any other items?
I just got communications on item number 35, receiving the emergency repair notice from the assistant purchasing agent relative to the damaged pipe within the spring system in the Birmingham Crossroads.
All right, thank you. Counselors, at this time, we will entertain any comments you have, or announcements regarding your district. And Counselor Woods, are you ready?
Can be. We'll say the Kilo Springs Neighborhood Association meets tonight at 6:00 p.m. at Smith Middle School. Definitely make sure, if you're in that neighborhood, to plug in and be involved and engaged in your community. On Saturday, March 18, at 9:00 a.m., we'll be continuing our District One Day of Service through Be Litter Free Campaign, and meeting at Calvary Resurrection Christian Church at 9:00 a.m. Going to have a pretty big group out there this week, so we'll be covering several different areas. So definitely want to encourage everybody to get out. Great opportunity to volunteer, make an impact in the community. And just one more time, love to celebrate the Huffman Lady Vikings on bringing that map home. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Woods. Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to also piggyback off of what Counselor Woods said. Thank the Wyon community. We had our Be Litter Free campaign this weekend. We had, we cleaned up quite a bit out there. But the announcements for District Nine is, District Nine and Community Development will be hosting the Shadowbrook First Time Home Buying Seminar on Saturday, March 18, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The event will take place at One Prep Park, located at 601 Dugan Avenue, Birmingham, 35214. You can RSVP on Eventbrite under Shadowbrook First Time Home Buy Your Seminar. And this event is reserved for the first 60 people. Sandusky Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at 6:00 p.m. and it's conference call, 319-527-9642. The code is 348-809. North Prep Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at 6:30, and it's also conference call, and it's 605-313-4100. The access code is 122-6945. The Ensley Neighborhood will be meeting on Thursday at 6:00 p.m. and they'll also be meeting on conference call, and it's 564-888-5518. The code is 818017. Oak Ridge Neighborhood Association will be having their cleanup on Saturday, March 18, so the Be Litter Free Campaign continues, and it's from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. This cleanup will take place at Springwater Park. The address is 1400 Midland Avenue, Birmingham, 35214. The next public safety meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 11, at 1:00 p.m. Please submit items by Wednesday, April 5, no later than 12:00 noon. And they can email me at latonya.tate@birminghamal.gov. Beatrice Collins, and it's B-E-A-T-R-I-C-E dot Collins at Birmingham, spelled all the way out, AL.gov, where you can call extension 2302 and 2096. So happy early St. Patrick's Day to each and every one of you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Tate. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Brown Springs Neighborhood will be meeting via conference call on this Thursday, March 16, at 6:00. Economic Development and Tourism Committee will be meeting Tuesday, March 21, at 11:30 in the chambers. And please have all submissions turned into India Bailey at india.baili@birminghamal.gov by Thursday, March 16. And obviously, the 16th and 18th, we have NCAA, which I think that everybody's very excited about. And so I think we're going to have a very successful Economic and Tourism Week for the City of Birmingham. Thank you.
I was going to say, thank you, Mr. Economic Development and Tourism. We hope those visitors and residents enjoy themselves and leave us a little green. Thank you very much. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to first acknowledge a couple of District Eight Neighborhood Presidents. It seems like they disappeared. Well, they moved. I see Julia Juarez is here. She represents the Thomas Neighborhood as the Neighborhood President. And Mr. Johnny Gunn was here for a moment and has disappeared, but we will be, I'll see him again tonight at his Neighborhood Meeting. Tonight, the Bellevue Heights Neighborhood will meet at 6:30 p.m. via conference call and in person at Brown Elementary School. And hopefully, people will come out in person. We want to conduct a visual preference survey to poll the neighborhood on possible treatments at the Bellevue Heights Gateway, where we have a beautiful new landscaped gateway with signage, but we have a pretty ugly blighted building kind of sitting in the middle of us. So, that building has been slated for demolition, and we want to make plans for what can go back in its place if the building is taken down. So hopefully, we'll have more people in person than on Zoom. Also, I think Counselor Tate already announced the Ensley Neighborhood Meeting. So we have the Graymont Neighborhood Meeting this Wednesday at the Smithfield Library, starting at 4:30 p.m. You can call my office at 205-254-2304 to get any dial-in information or other details about Neighborhood Meetings. Want to also announce an event coming up at the Birmingham Botanical Gardens, if I can get my phone to act right. And it may be of interest, it's the 2023 Spencer Lecture on New Naturalism: Designing and Planting a Resilient Ecologically Vibrant Home Garden. And that's featuring author, author and horticulturalist Kelly D. Norris. It's taking place on Thursday, March 16, at 6:00 p.m. The admission is free, but seating is limited. You may register at bbgardens.org/spencerlecture. Also, we had a good time in beautiful weather this past weekend, cleaning up College Hills and Graymont Neighborhoods. We're gonna, our next stop is going to be Central Park. We're going there on Saturday, April 8, for our monthly Be Litter Free Cleanup in April. We're really grateful to have the help of our partners at Black Warrior Riverkeepers, and also Hands-on Birmingham Municipal Courts, and Stormwater Management, everybody who helps us. We're very grateful. Want to just announce that summer camp applications are open for MacAlpine Recreation Center. They're now taking application for summer camps for ages five through 13. There is a $50 registration fee to hold your spot. It's non-refundable, and it needs to be paid by money order. The fee for the camp is $150 for the month of June, and another $150 for the month of July. And yes, the pool will be open. So, I know, it's always a feat to get a pool open around here. But, but we are, you know, we're looking really promising this year with all the training that the YMCA is doing for lifeguards, whether they're going to work at the Y or not. So that just kind of bleeds into my other announcement about lifeguards. We need lifeguards. So if you know anybody who's ever dreamed of being a lifeguard or is already certified, now is the time to get trained and certified for free. And I'll tell you more about who to contact in a moment. Actually, I'm there. So if you want to be a lifeguard, you can call 205-254-2189 and speak with Terri Sewell Harris for more information. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Counselor Abbott? Councilor Abbott?
Thank you, Madam President. I fondly remember my training as a lifeguard. You have to be in shape, y'all. You know, you can't just go out there if you've been sitting around for the last year and swim a mile in the pool because you'll drown. But, but we do need lifeguards, so practice up. The next Planning and Zoning Committee Meeting will be held Wednesday, April 12th, which is a long time from now, but the National League of Cities is putting a little hitch in our get along. The Neighborhood Association meetings for tonight are East Avondale and Highland Park Neighborhood, both at 6:00 in the evening. East Avondale, I believe that they are still meeting by phone, and Highland Park is now meeting again in person and on Zoom. The Glen Iris Neighborhood held a cleanup this past Saturday in George Ward Park and Greens Springs Highway, and we had a great turnout of residents, which resulted in a huge pile of trash. Well, we would really like to not be that successful. It would be wonderful if people would quit throwing everything out their car windows when they are visiting our parks and driving down Greens Springs Highway, because it was a hot mess. But, but anyway, we had a good time and the weather was beautiful. If you have any concerns or issues, you can either call 311 of what you want the city to fix, which I just think is a wonderful thing to be able to do. And you can go to get that at the Play Store or the Apple Store. So, and we want residents of District Three to continue to visit our website at www.bhamdistrictthree.com, because we are putting all of the wonderful events and information that other councilors send to us and the mayor on that site so that nobody misses anything. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. Dr. Quinn?
Thank you, Madam President. As Councilor Abbott mentioned, East Avondale Neighborhood Association meets tonight at 6:00 PM via conference call. You can call our office or Councilor Abbott's office to get the call-in information. North Avondale Neighborhood Association meets on Thursday night at 6:00 PM at the MLK Recreation Center at 529 Forty-third Street North. And finally, South Side Neighborhood Association will meet this Thursday at 6:00 PM at the Birmingham Police Department South Precinct. This one is new. So South Side Neighborhood has not had a neighborhood, has not had neighborhood officers for a while, so it's been a long time since they've met. So if you live in the South Side Neighborhood, please be advised that Neighborhood Meetings are resuming again. The next meeting is Thursday at 6:30, or 6:00 PM at the Birmingham South Precinct. Some of you are aware that there were a couple of train derailments over the weekend. There was a pretty big derailment that's still being cleaned up in Anniston. Heard that there was another one in the Coleman area. You know, of course, we have lots of hazardous materials that are moved in trucks in the highways throughout the city. You know, we're coming up on tornado season. So I want to encourage everyone to consider becoming a volunteer for the Community Emergency Response Team. Birmingham Fire and Rescue Service is preparing for their upcoming Community Emergency Response Team class this fall and are currently seeking volunteers to participate. The Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT, program helps people train to better, to be better prepared to respond to emergency situations in their communities. If you or someone you know is interested in becoming a CERT member, please send an email with your name, phone number, and email address to pubed, P-U-B-E-D, at birminghamal.gov. The classes are April 11th to May 23rd from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at Fire Station Number Two, located at 611th Street South. And also wanted to announce that Jones Valley Teaching Farm, their Good Community Food Fellowship is now accepting applicants until March 17th. Over the course of ten months, Community Food Fellows will attend a series of learning opportunities led by local farmers and chefs. Fellows will also deepen their practice by applying what they learn in the management of individual community garden beds at the Center for Food Education. Individuals who complete the fellowship will be eligible to apply for assistance in establishing new community garden sites of their own. For the application link, please reach out to Jessica, the Jones Valley Teaching Farm Senior Farm Manager at community@jvtf.org, or call 205-453-7268. And I just want to wish everyone a happy St. Patrick's Day this Friday and get out and see the NCAA Tournament Games. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn. Madam Pro Tem?
Thank you, Madam President. We have two Neighborhood Meetings tonight. We have the South Tissville Neighborhood, which will meet via teleconference at 5:30 today. The call-in number is 602-580-9484, and the access code is 684-6610. Also, the Arlington-Weston Neighborhood will meet today in person at 6:00 PM at the West End Library. The next Budget and Finance Meeting will meet Monday, April 10th at 3:30 PM here in the council chambers. Submissions are due Wednesday, April 5th by noon. Email submissions to laquilla.wilson and ethan.harris@birminghamal.gov. I want to say congratulations to the Birmingham City Schools Tournament Champions, Ramses Softball and Baseball Team. So we're really proud of them and we're wishing them the best as they continue on. I know that the, our CRR has started a new pilot program for community meetings. I really hope everybody comes and really, I think this is a really great opportunity. And so it's the Tissville Community will meet every third Thursday at Memorial Park Recreation Center from 6:30 to 7:30. This means for the following neighborhoods, North Tissville, South Tissville, and Woodland Park. And you'll be able to talk to, I think it's department heads, your council members. So this is a good opportunity to get your complaints out. And then the Southwest Community, I think we both have, I think it's really both our districts almost, but the Southwest Community, they will meet every third Wednesday, and that's this week, at Oxmoor Valley Recreation Center from 6:30 to 7:30. This means it's for the District Six Neighborhood, Mason City, but there are other neighborhoods that will be there, Garden Highlands, Jones Valley, Oxmoor Valley, Power Lee, and Raleigh, so our neighboring neighborhoods. Also, the Links Organization is doing a Black Wellness Expo. This will be held this Saturday at 10:00 AM at Rowell Park. Swat bags will be given to the first fifty guests. Come join the family fun walk and come walk with me at Rowell Park. DA Danny Carr will host the Second Chance. Hire and Fear does next Tuesday at the Bowel from 10:00 to 2:00. And this is really good, so if you know anybody that's a previously convicted felon, this is an opportunity for them to get a job. If you need more information, the website is secondchancehiringfear.com. There will be a second, there will be a St. Patrick's Day Celebration in Five Point South. And then the actual parade will be on March 18th starting at 1:30 PM. And then, last two things, there's a lot going on. The Meyer Coffee House, which is in Tissville off of Sixth Avenue, they will host a Modern Connections, and that's with Empowering Women. That will be tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:00, and it's connecting modern women through coffee and community. And last, and lastly, there will be a Grow with Google event, Seek Business Finance and Overcome Objections. This will be on Monday, the 20th, at 6:00 PM at the South Side Library. This will include myself, Gilberto Herrera, that's the Alabama coach for Google, and Carla Youngblood with Urban Impact. And as more information on the signing events happening in District Six and the city, visit our website at www.d6bham.com. Also on the website, if there are community events you'd like to submit for your own organization via Neighborhood Meetings, this is on the website. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Madam Pro Tem. These are the announcements for District Seven. Today, we have the following Neighborhood Meetings. East Brownsville Neighborhood will meet at the Mirador Center. That's 4560 Park Avenue Southwest at 6:00 PM. Then we'll ride on over to Riley, Travalik. They'll be meeting at Noble Chapel AME Church. That's at 3700 Maple Avenue Southwest. Both meetings are at the same time, 6:00 PM. Also, there's bulk trash and brush pickup scheduled today for the Riley Neighborhood. Tomorrow, bulk trash and brush pickup are scheduled for the Green Acres Neighborhood. On Thursday, we'll have two Neighborhood Meetings. Hillman Neighborhood Association will meet at Hopewell Baptist Church. That's 4817 Jefferson Avenue Southwest at 5:00 PM. And Jermania Park Neighborhood Association, they continue to meet via conference call, and it'll be at 6:00 PM. Bulk trash and brush pickup is scheduled for West Goldwire and Garden Highlands on Thursday. Saturday, we'll be having our monthly cleanup this month. The cleanup is in Jones Valley. The Neighborhood Cleanup will start from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. We'll be registering and getting our points for cleanup at 3301 Jefferson Avenue Southwest. Again, we'll start at 9:00 AM. I continue to be grateful to the empowered citizens of Birmingham who are helping us to sponsor and provide volunteers for these cleanups. So thank you very much. Monday, March 20th, bulk trash and brush pickup is scheduled for the Industrial Center and Tarpley City Neighborhoods. Councilors, we will not have Committee of the Whole Meeting tomorrow. That is canceled. And so Councilor Smollett will be able to attend our community meetings. So that is one thing I did talk about, though. That meeting is always scheduled for Committee of the Whole. So the meeting for tomorrow is not scheduled. And I just want to thank those councilors that were able to attend and go to the Alabama League of Municipalities. Last week, several councilors went to get up close and personal with our legislative members during the ALM advocacy days. This did give us an opportunity to hear some information from the governor. Prior to her, she had just, as we got there, they had sent the legislature into a special session. They are considering, I believe it's a billion dollars, I'm not sure how much, for monies, ARPA monies. And so I just want to tell you, as residents, you can be involved in this. What the governor has asked the legislators to do is how to disperse this ARPA dollars, and included in that is money that they, she's asking them to go towards mental health. And you may wonder, why is this important to us? The mental health is a very important component of our crime reduction initiatives that we have. And so we'd like for you to just get out to your legislators or to your representatives and your senators and ask them to look at allocating those funds for mental health. In addition, that I do see, we do have someone here to speak today about exhibition driving. Just want to make you aware, that is part of our legislative agenda, that we are asking the members of the legislature to consider and actually enact a bill about that. So thank you for those councilors. Yes, thank you very much. As you know, I believe it was last week or several weeks ago, we did have members of the CAB to come and talk about the Citizens Participation Plan that is being revised by the CAB, and that's the community leaders within our ninety-nine neighborhoods. And this is a plan that helps to manage and outlines guidelines for the management of our neighborhood groups. And so we will be inviting, we'll have a work session during our April Committee of the Whole Meeting, where we're bringing that group back. And they provided us with rationales for their reasons for change. We've given some feedback as we've reviewed that. So it does have to have council review and approval. So we'll be working with a work session during our Committee of the Whole Meeting for our April Meeting. All right, so thank you for reminding me of that. And I just want to be sure that you, those members do get that feedback back into us and we, as councilors, provide that feedback, so that work session will be beneficial for us. Thank you very much. That ends my announcements. Mr. Clerk, if we're ready now to entertain our speakers?
Marks? They speak earlier with the, um, is it Jumbo?
I think both of those with the NACA presentation earlier. Oh, I'm sorry. Good morning.
That's okay. Good morning.
If you give us your name and...
Chichi Jumbo.
Okay, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I'm truly happy to be here, especially this month, we are celebrating women, and I'm a woman. And also, this month marks one year that we closed on our home. We purchased our home March the first, 2022. Sorry, I'm kind of like nervous a little bit, being in front of you, great people. Yeah, so I am extremely grateful to God for the platform, NACA, provided for my family. Councilwoman, Ms. Clerk, I heard when you talked about your NACA experience, I am a current NACA homeowner, so I can testify to what you said. It's still the same process. You know, it was an amazing experience that we had the opportunity to go through the program. The program is not just a program that gets you into a home, but it helps you to sustain the home. And when we have people sustaining their homes, it helps to keep the community safer than it is prior to not having everybody, you know, participate in paying their mortgages and stuff. And that's what NACA will do for people. So I'm truly grateful that we found NACA. Me and my husband, we have an eight-year-old son who is all about NACA too. So with NACA, we were able not to think about our credit score, not to think about the down payments, like the conventional banks will ask you to bring, making it more difficult for people who are, who may be middle-class or who are just, you know, getting by, not necessarily getting by, but you're doing everything right, but because your inability to have all those requirements that the other banks will put on you. But NACA made it possible for myself and my family to, you know, become a homeowner. When we closed, it was a four-bedroom, three-bathroom home with a 2.85% interest rate, which was below market rate at that time. It was really amazing, and I'm still an advocate for NACA, even though I closed a year ago. But I'm, I'm here to, you know, let, let everyone know that the program is truly too good to be true, but it's real. You know, if someone like me and my family can purchase a home, I believe there are lots of family out there, hard-working people, you know, who will still benefit through the program. And I pray that the council will, you know, read up the article that Mr. Bruce left behind and think about it, how much it's going to help our city, Birmingham, and the surrounding area, you know? Because when we drive around and see all those homes that have been abandoned, you know, I imagine whereby NACA comes in and, you know, partner with the city, with the city. And we have those hard-working families go into those homes. Like I said before, what NACA does is not just giving you the pathway of homeownership, but it sustains, sustains you. Because with my family, since we closed off from NACA, our income increased because NACA helped us to even learn how to manage our finances. So they won't even start by helping you to get mortgages. They will teach you how to be comfortable where you are and how to aim higher so you can sustain and pay your mortgage. Our mortgage is lower than what we paid in rent. We paid in rent up to $1,500, but what we pay currently is about $1,180, that includes our tax, so which means we're not even going to have a problem with paying taxes and also insurance. So I pray that you all will consider the idea of NACA coming in to help us, city-help our hard-working families that desperately need to be in their home rather than paying rent, because if they can pay rent, they can pay their mortgage.
Thank you so much for sharing your experience. Thank you, and we appreciate you investing in the city with your home. Thank you. Next speaker?
Faith Abraham? Elizabeth Bevel? Faith is here?
Are you Ms. Abraham? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Abraham. You have three minutes. Good morning.
Good morning. I haven't been down here in a long time, but I'm excited because there are lots of great things happening in Birmingham, and I know you all and the prior mayor and count, prior council, councilors have set a great momentum that is bringing great things to Birmingham. And I'm excited as, as a longtime resident of Birmingham about that. So I'm a concerned citizen, speaking on behalf of other concerned citizens. I'm Faith Abraham. A few things I'd like to ask you to consider on behalf of the Pratt City community is I'm a past office holder, multiple office holder, and I came back to the Pratt community in 2018, two years after my mom died, bought her property and some adjacent property, and rejoined the neighborhood and participated. We have people in our community that are so weary of the processes that they have been through trying to get change in Pratt City. And as an officer, we were not able to get the cooperation and collaboration during my tenure and also prior tenures to make the changes that the majority of the residents want. What we find a lot of times is that certain agendas are pushed and they don't match what the larger scale of residents want. Many of them I've experienced are afraid to come forward, even those who gave me information, didn't want me to share their names, but I do have that information. What we are asking for is a consideration, oh, point. I read in an article that a spokesperson for this city had said that, and this was regarding the South Town development, that it's not good to have concentrated poverty in areas, and that was a part of why they were redeveloping and doing some of the things with South Town. And that's awesome, that is true. But we are also concerned in Pratt City, because we love our neighborhood too, about lots of rentals being pushed into that area as opposed to opportunities for more homeowners. And we know from reading the national statistics that where there are more, more rentals, there also tends to be more crime, more police incidents. And so our neighbors are very much concerned primarily right now with a change to the number of units that were proposed at Shadow Brook. We were originally told 52 units. I have a confirmation email that that was now being looked at to be 60 units. And so we have neighbors that are very concerned about the current crime and the undesirable behavior that we're seeing in North Pratt. And we're even more concerned that more rentals, a big push for more rental homes will bring more undesirable things. And so this morning, I bring a request on behalf of the voices I represent for an audience with those who have the authority for impactful engagement that will result in real action for progress and solutions regarding some of the long unaddressed issues and concerns in Pratt City. And I want to thank, take this opportunity, Carol Clark has come out to our neighborhood and listened in a session that, that was held at the Birmingham Library. And also Ms. Tate has really had an open ear. But I want to encourage the council as a whole, when you're voting on issues concerning Pratt City, to understand that there are a group of people who are not participating in the process, and it's not because they don't care, it's because they're frustrated.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Elizabeth Bevel. Elizabeth Bevel.
Yes, you have three minutes. Thank you.
It's good to be here. And I've heard so many great things about Birmingham, too. I hate to be the bearer of bad news for, for some parts of Birmingham, I'm from District 5. And my mother, Ms. Willamallheart, lives at 4346 Third Avenue South, and I live there sometimes too. About two years ago, the papers are coming down, hopefully are being passed down to you. I want you to take one passing down, please, thank you. About two years ago, District 5 Neighborhood Association voted for Mom's Basement to open in our neighborhood. The owner of Mom's Basement said that there would be a small bar, of course, that would accommodate 10 to 30 people inside the bar and at any given time. It would not have loud noises coming outside of the bar and loud music. The neighbors also would not have to worry about people parking in front of our mailboxes, blocking the hydrant, or staying open all times of mornings. They opened from, from can, from, from 8:00 o'clock, closed at maybe 4:30 in the mornings. And so these are some of the things they said they would not do, but nevertheless, they are still happening in our neighborhood. I was here on last, last year with the same issues. But however, Mom's Basement has continued to disturb, to disturb the quiet enjoyment of our, our homes, and they have done so for the last two years. There's a list of information that, that you want to read, I'm going to just give the gist of it. But anyway, they're, they're making all kinds of, of course, noises, they're parking on the grass, they're, they're, I have some pictures also that I want you all to see. Well, they're parking on the grass. They're parking all on the grass, it's on for single-family homes. Some of the patrons who are at Mom's Bar Basement go across the street. They have a truck that's parked over there on that lawn. They're going across the street to use the restroom. They also have porta toilets in the neighborhood, they have been there for almost a year. Of course, they're not connected to the sewer system, and they are posed a health hazard for, and dangerous also for children who might go in there and get locked in those porta toilets that are on the streets. They shouldn't be on the street. And of course, they are. And the capacity of 10 to 30 people has really exceeded its amount. They have anywhere from 200 people sometimes there. And then you can hear the, they were on the news talking about the monogra. We knew the monogra was going to end up at that place that was designed for 10 to 30 people, 300 people in our neighborhood. So of course, they're disturbing the quiet enjoyment of our neighborhood. We want it back, and we want them to close. We want that business closed because they helped out roam their capacity. And they've been a nuisance for the last two years, and they'll continue to be. And we just want them closed, we want them out of our neighborhood. And they're the same group of people who moved from 41st Street and Fifth Avenue South across from Avondale Park for the same reasons. So that's, that's my concern.
Thank you, Ms. Bevel. They continue to pass around, I think you sent some other items for us to review, and we're looking at those. I do know that what you've addressed here are violations that can be referred to our PEP Department Chief.
Yes, ma'am. Actually, our PEP Department is, is engaged. They went out on last week, going back out again today. The zoning violations have been reported to the business and will be again addressed today, Ms. Bevel. So the team will be following up with you, but they are engaged. Just know that we are, we're very, very, very aware, and the businesses, the business has been put on notice, and those, those violations are being effectuated as we speak.
Okay, thank you. Also, the police has been, we've called the police several times to, to let them know about them parking on the grass, and they saying, when they get there, they'll tell us that it's okay for them to park on the grass. No, it's not okay. That's a, that's a zoning violation of city ordinance against parking on the lawn, and that the property they're parking on is designated for single-family homes.
Thank you. And that's noted as well by administration. Thank you very much. All right, next speaker?
Charlie Williams. Charlie Williams.
You've got three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. In the absence of the mayor, Chief Marks, members of the council, good morning. I'm Charlie L. Williams Jr. And as the young lady said, I am too nervous to stand in front of you all. I'm so thankful that you all have agreed that we need to address exhibition driving in the city of Birmingham. And I, I'm here to say that we're at a deficit with regard to our response to this activity. Last year, right down at CityWalk, there was a group of individuals who were carrying on...
You speak, we're having a little trouble hearing you.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Do I start my time over? We good?
That's all right.
Okay, we're good. All right, very good. So nonetheless, there was the activity there at CityWalk. And when asked during the news interview, what could be done, our chief, Chief Thurman, said that individuals, well, officers had to see the activity before anything could be done. And while that is a fact, there were uniform officers in the crowd. I'm not blaming the officers or what have you, because you have to, the chief has to see that this is important to us. Also, during the World Games, cameras were placed from 15th Street North to 26th Street North to be, to monitor activities down there. Now, we deserve safe streets. The streets don't lie. All you have to do to find out where that activity is going, is just look for the burnouts and the, and the drag racing that's going down. There could be operations set up to address this. Yes, we have a new legislative law that's about it. We feel like it's going to be passed, with confidence it's going to be passed. We've heard all across the country, there's a shortage of police officers, and we know this. When asked to address it in the city of Birmingham, our chief said on television that there's a hatred of the police. I gave you three examples of how we have individuals on this force who are role models. The hatred of the police based upon the chief comes from individuals like Black Lives Matter and the defunding of police. There were no strategies given for recruitment in the streets and in the neighborhoods. The contention is that we have a good old boy network with regards to the Birmingham Police Department. Now, I applaud our men and women every day, and I have no problems with the chief's perceived politics, but just for a little history, had the chief taken a ride down by Railroad Park, he would have seen or noticed that Black Lives Matter is, has been placated right there in the middle of the streets. There has not been any robust protest and a call for the funding of the Birmingham Police Department. We need results-oriented strategies to keep our streets safe. And I will submit to you that, yes, while we have professional officers, the men and women who serve us here in Birmingham, this must be a priority of our chief. Otherwise, we'll have another law on the book where we find ourselves at deficit with regards to the service that we deserve.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Artist Murphy. Artist Murphy.
You have three minutes. Good morning.
To the mayor's office, to the city council, good morning. I came to encourage leadership. The truth of the matter is, is that the truth has never lied, and a lie has never told the truth. The truth of the matter is, the city of Birmingham leadership has done a great job throughout the most difficult time in human history. I'm tired of the people who supposed to support our leadership, and I'm talking about those who have navigated Jim Crow, who have navigated slavery, who have navigated the things that these young people are going through. I'm here to tell you to keep going, that you are doing an awesome job. I want to say to my mayor, you have earned my respect. I've heard some things and, and the things that you have dealt with and the, and the way that you have handled a man first class and his staff. I'm here to tell you all, you probably don't believe what I'm saying, because it's something that you don't hear often. But what you should do if you care about these young people, you see some of the things that they are missing, I'm talking about those who have been in this position. And all they need is that one little thing, the Bible says a fitly word is more precious than a pitcher of apples of gold. And I'm here to tell you, we need to support leadership. You all stay together, y'all continue to love one another. I did not bring myself here, it's just a message that God want you to hear. Those who are out there in these communities, we don't support our young leaders, we don't give them anything during their run, during their election period. All we have done over the last 50 years in Birmingham is tear down one another. And then what happens as a result of that, now we can't work together. All these talents that God has given us, now we allow the enemy to divide them. I'm letting you know, stay together. Don't look at differences, that's coming from the enemy. Look at uniqueness. This thumbprint, I have, it's the same thumbprint I was born with, it identified me then, it's going to identify me till I die. It don't make me any better, it don't make me any different, it's just that we're gifted different. So put these talents together, and let me end at this. The truth will never need altering. Why? Because the foundation of it is unflawed. May God bless you, may God keep you, is my awesome prayer.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy. Does that conclude our speakers' lives?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Counselors, I do want to remind you before we adjourn.
Okay, at this time, councilors, we do, before we adjourn, we do have a 311-911 board meeting immediately following. Mr. Silas says we will be brief. And, Councilor Tate, did you...
I just want to acknowledge Dr. Nadia Richardson, the Black Women's Mental Health Institute. We had an opportunity to join her last weekend, made a donation to the organization to offer mental health services and counseling in District 9.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good morning, Dr. Richardson. Glad to see you. All right, councilors, can we entertain a motion for adjournment, but don't leave.
Second.
Please let me know my second.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Silas, it's on you now. Good morning.